Follow me in the order, rise for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes to the agenda?
Not to the ones presented, but this is revised agenda with some of as a supplement packet from the ones that originally provided the council. We reordered a couple of items or a couple of items that were full from the agenda, but we requested.
Motion to approve the agenda in front of us.
Second.
Any discussion?
Aye.
Office of office.
Alright, Mr. Mayor, Office of office for new plan, Mr. Chairman.
No, for John.
Oh, for John, I'm sorry.
If you could please raise your right hand. Repeat after me.
Aye.
John Schwitzenberg.
John Schwitzenberg.
We solemnly swear.
We solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And discharge faithfully the duties of the Office of City Councilman.
Which is charge faithfully the duties of the Office of City Councilman.
Of the City Council of Market, Minnesota.
The City of Elkhorn, Market, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Public comment? Anyone have anything they'd like to address the council on that's not currently on the agenda? Once, twice, public comment. Consent agenda. Anyone have anything they want to discuss on it or have full potential?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Berg, second by Timmerman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pass it to the members. General business. Adopt resolution appointing a planning commissioner.
City council has been forward a recommendation to appoint Todd Preedy to the planning commission to fill the vacancy that was created by the resignation of Heather Better. Todd was one of three candidates that had applied for the position. And the panel that was selected by the council conducted interviews and Todd is the recommended appointee. We would be asking the council to adopt Resolution 1906, appointing Todd to the planning commission.
Any motions?
Motion to approve. Adopt Resolution 1906, appointing planning commissioner Todd Preedy.
Second. Motion by Timmerman, second by Berg. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, would you swear in?
Yes. I would be glad to. First time doing this. Alright, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye, Todd Preedy.
We solemnly swear to support the Constitution. We solemnly swear to support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully the duties of the Office of Planning Commission. And to discharge faithfully.
And to discharge faithfully.
The duties.
Of the Office of Planning Commission. Of the Office of Planning Commission.
Of the City of Elkhorn Market.
Of the City of Elkhorn Market.
Minnesota.
Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment.
To the best of my judgment.
And ability, so help me God.
And ability, so help me God. Thank you. Okay. The appointment of council representative to the appeals, for the administration appeals board.
With the former mayor Crawford leaving the council, he was the council representative on the board. We're looking for somebody to serve in that capacity going forward, so we're looking for a council volunteer.
Any volunteers?
What, when do these things typically happen?
On an as-needed basis, so once we have an appeal or multiple appeals. And we will contact the members of the board and basically schedule a meeting at their convenience. We have to post it, so there's usually a little bit of lead time. Typically, we've held beginning or end of the workday, depending on the availability, or we've held them before or after council meetings.
I mean, I'd volunteer to do it.
You need a motion, bud?
We need a motion.
Motion to approve, Josh, to the representative to administrative board of appeals.
Motion by Timmerman, second by Cieprasad. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. We're just moving along quickly here.
Do we have to wait till eight?
We actually have till eight o'clock. When we originally set the time on the notice, we weren't expecting we had more items on the agenda.
Okay. As some of you probably know, we have a public hearing scheduled that was posted and scheduled for eight o'clock, so we do have to wait till eight o'clock before we can open that up, so. So let's move on to reports. Administration.
It wasn't on the agenda, but Haley's been in contact with the MVTA with regards to qualifications for the appointee to sit on the board. And it was a good question because they had to go look it up. Apparently, although historically all of the serving board members have been elected officials, there apparently is no specific requirement for it. Based on the direction from the city council, it means the city administrator, if there's a need, would attend. However, in discussions with John just recently, he'd indicated that he got missed out on appointments because he wasn't on the council at that time. He has indicated, I think, some interest. And so if the council would like to discuss with John whether or not he'd like to be appointed and possibly change that appointment.
John, would you like to be appointed?
So we need a motion for that.
Does anyone, yeah, we'll start with motions. Anyone want to make a motion for that?
Motion to assign John Schwitzenberg, I can't pronounce your last name, to MVTA board.
Say your last name.
Schwitzenberg.
Motion by Timmerman?
Second.
Second by Berg, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Anything else, Tom? Please?
Just wanted to give a shout out to officers McAdie and Rudolph. They've really stepped up in covering shifts when we've been shorthanded with illness and other things, and obviously shorthanded in general, especially on short notice. And then we just concluded our final interviews for the officer position. And we issued background packets to those to a couple of candidates. Hopefully, the planners will get those back next week, start rolling on backgrounds. And fingers crossed, I would think, beginning of March, hopefully for the new officer to start.
Full-time officer.
Correct.
Alright. Anything else? Alright, thank you. Public works, Corey's not here, did he have any?
I don't think Corey would be, well, it's been snowing. No, Corey didn't have anything specific that he wanted me to bring up with the council tonight.
Okay. Engineering? We're trying to kill time.
Presentation on something?
No, please.
Shadow puppets, Rich?
Any community development, you have anything you can share with us?
Sure. We have met with two developers over the last two days. I think it's, people are starting to look at spring projects again, so we're starting to get some interest from developers. Hopefully, something comes to fruition, as we're both residential developments. I reported the last company, we were looking at a nonprofit project. We need a right-of-way easement from three property owners. We worked out tentative terms with two of them already. We hope to, we've received bids for right-of-way agent services and we'll bring those to you at the next meeting for approval. So we're anticipating that to go pretty smoothly, doing the right-of-way acquisition. We have scheduled an open house for around February 11th here at City Hall in Lundy, on 4th and 63. And we can do some, get help out with the physical event. And Kathy's been working on that and. We are, we have a planning commission meeting next Tuesday. Currently, we're, one item on the agenda is we're going to ask for input on food trucks.
Any conversations on Boulder Heights yet? Any idea when they're looking to start doing anything or?
No. Honestly, I reached out to one of his girlfriends, made a phone call, and we invited to this assessment project that Rich is going to speak about later tonight, and we didn't talk about Boulder Heights.
Yeah.
We did receive our first proposal for 2017 today for the house. We issued 31 housing units last year. I was excited, we beat out some of our neighboring communities, so.
Any update on the townhome project or some of the other projects that were in that area?
In the Decatur area. As you know, we issued the 13 townhome units that are in construction. We've issued practice units on one entire building. The developers decided to attempt to sell that, I think they were banking buildings to help finance the second phase of the project. One of the units is under contract at this time. We have been in discussions actually very threatening. The office just revealed, you know, the last couple of days, we're re-reading the development contract on phase two, which is coming up. So we believe they are, you know, planning forward with construction.
Anything you wish to say? I'm just trying to kill time.
I do have a matter, I could take the council on time. I don't know how much they know about the issue with the driveway and the weed, the concern about the free ride.
Might be useful for them to, at least know the background if there's questions.
That might be a good thing to build space with. And it's, and it's interesting.
Lots of applause.
Well, let's just let you speak first, and then we can decide.
This is particularly of interest to the owners and develop, to any potential developer of this site at the southeast quadrant of our new roundabout that's proposed. Council may recall that sort of the plan that developed over several years of talking to the county and looking at options was that this site would have access via right-in, right-out at this location and another right-in, right-out at this location. There would not be a left turn in or a left turn out. It would only be right-in, right-out. And the same thing here, once, it would start out as a full access, but over time, as either a roundabout or signals went in, it would be restricted to right-in, right-out. The thinking was with the roundabout, you can go and come from any direction, get in the site with those two accesses. There was also a maybe out there from the county standpoint, depending on the use and the need. They were open to possibly allowing a left turn. You'll recall discussions about actually including extra width to facilitate that in the future. All of that was based on a roundabout that did not have a free right turn. This free right came to be with the concept development focused on the details of the traffic movements in the peak hours in the morning, a lot of people going this way and so forth. And it clearly makes sense to have a free right turn to keep this heavy traffic movement in the morning moving. What happens is they will come up and they'll end up in their own lane and continue on unimpeded on two. Other traffic coming from the north or coming around the roundabout or through would end up on the north side in the same direction. Now imagine if there's a use here that has some attraction to people in the morning. If you're northbound on 91 and you want to go, you're going to make this right. What that means is everybody that goes past that driveway and makes that free ride is not interested in stopping because they'd have already done it. What they're doing at this point is accelerating and heading in.
Yep.
So the people that want to use this driveway are coming from the other directions and they're going to come out of that roundabout on the north side. What they have to do is find a gap in this stream of cars that are accelerating. While they're slowing down, looking for that gap to cross a lane, get into the right turn lane and make the move. And so the county is concerned now about allowing that driveway because of that weaving motion. So everybody thinks the right, free right makes sense for the majority of traffic, but it is under review now. We've sent all of our materials to the new traffic engineer so that they confirm up what their concerns are and then we'll be responding to that. We agree that it's a valid concern, that it may be significant, but we want to see what their specific concerns are. If we can defeat it, we'll look at that. If not, we will be pressing for some sort of approval of that southbound left. Because with that, you can again, with the roundabout, make any movement in any direction, even without this access. The property owner's well aware of it. We advise them that they should engage their own traffic engineer specialists to be their advocate. They've done that. And so right now, we're waiting for the county to come back with some specific findings. So I think we've, we've got options and ways forward, but it is a pretty major issue, so.
Did the property owners provide any feedback or any concerns or?
They certainly, I mean, they're, I think they understand it. But they haven't come back after conferring with their engineer what they think. We've asked them to consider, not just, you know, asking for every and all access, but does that really make sense? There's some benefits perhaps to the site, to not having two public right-of-ways with turnarounds. If they can consolidate it one, have they thought of that? On the other hand, you know, I'm not a marketer of sites. I don't know how important a prospect is going to view that. That's something they'll have to decide whether they can overcome. So some moving parts. I don't think the roundabout's in jeopardy, but, you know, it may restrict the use of this site. I don't know what the outcome's going to be yet.
Just looks from that design, there could be room for a dedicated turn lane.
Well, we can fit the turn lane. It's the leaving. Imagine you have to.
It's the same issue, it's why people stop on the off-ramp on two if they're trying to get over to the dirt road right there. I mean, that's why they stop half the time and people are honking them.
And now imagine the guy up here trying to get into the truck.
Yeah, right.
He needs an even bigger gap and he needs room to get across in time and not block it. And he's got people backed up behind him, people backed up, you know, so it could get.
So not behind is probably not as much of an issue, but during peak time where there's a solid stream, more solid stream, or fewer, fewer or smaller gaps, that's the concern that the council is expressing. And do we know if there's any active inquiries into that property?
No.
No, not currently. In 2015, the city prepared some marketing information for specific to hardware stores.
The broker that has the property listed has asked city staff to help him prepare marketing information to market to a hardware store. We created a pretty nice marketing piece in 2015. We'll be updating that now. They agreed on kind of the area that they would draw from. So we'll prepare demographic information, income, demographic information, and consumer expenditure information to show what people in the area are spending on hardware-related products today. So we'll do that over the next couple of weeks.
You said the two out of the three property owners that you need to work with for right-of-way?
Yes, yes, yes. This one, we've come to terms on price. So, I mean, this will be on a future meeting, hopefully the next meeting too. They've made an offer that we feel is reasonable and accurate, a reflection of the market value of the property. On this particular property, there's both permanent easement and temporary easement.
We'll be looking for permanent and temporary easement from this parcel. Permanent easement from a parcel over here and temporary easement from this parcel.
So one of the, the third property owner has indicated they do want to go through the full, the full appraisal process, condemnation process that's allowed under.
I don't know if the public has any questions about, I mean, this project will affect everybody, so. Since we have a few minutes, if there's questions or comments.
At the, at the open house, is it, would the discussion about the adoption, being able to be part of that open roundabout project, or will it be pulled down?
We will have a board that shows sort of the impacts. So it'll show the probable detour route. They have to be county roads and sees are county roads. So it'll show what those would be and the distances involved. And I think we're going to try to show at least something that talks about the extra duration of construction and hopefully even something about the extra cost. So it's a trade-off, you know, quick and cheap, but everybody's got to drive around or through and takes longer and costs more.
I suppose if you're going south, the detour would go all the way to.
Eighty-six to Pillsbury.
Which means most people will avoid that cut-through and drive.
Those cut-through.
So the only real way to know duration and more, and associated with that cost is to actually bid it. So we've had some discussions at a staff level where the bid, bid it as one or the other. And even the council might be inclined one way or the other to actually have that information before making the final decision. The issues that we see as staff are, one, it's part of what we saw when we rebuilt Connie Road Two through town. Anybody that's, anybody that lives around here knows the shortcuts. So you can certainly send them over to Pillsbury, but they're probably going to take other routes. The other portion of it is the impact to the downtown businesses. Anytime you're doing a road project that creates a detour around or limits access to a new business area, there is, there, everything shows that there's an impact. And we have clear evidence from when we did the two project. This isn't immediately in front of the business, but it does impact the through traffic. On the flip side, the duration, there's a reason. For instance, when the county's doing their roundabout projects, they simply shut it down. The cost and duration, there's a big impact with cost and duration if you're trying to keep it open. And even if it is open, the impact of that is it still does limit function or portions of functions for at least interim periods of time. And so that still may discourage certain people from traveling through the intersection while it's under construction. So those are all considerations. We, as we're getting more information, will provide it to the council. But we anticipate that the traveling public will want to know and the downtown business community will definitely want to know, unless they're primarily concerned. From a fire response standpoint, there is a potential limit, but there are alternative routes around.
They would know those.
Yep.
It will drag in law enforcement, but I have people driving around with their kids who have pregnant kids too. It's because we've tried to shut down the roundabouts. I know it's had tonics that had non-stop calls.
The same will happen here, just aware. Yeah, when we, in 2009, when we were doing that, at that time, we did not have full-time officers. We, although we, we definitely had two full-time officers, and there was a big pressure on the council to basically do heavy, heavy traffic enforcement in those particular areas, but you. It's very hard to deny somebody, as long as they're traveling through and traveling at regular speeds, you know, in those particular situations. And we did see, for instance, on Aaron Drive, we did see the traffic counts go up quite a bit. So there would be, there's always impacts. People is trying to find a way.
Trying to find a way.
Just for council information, it's not just the downtown that would be concerned. A Speedway was pretty keen on doing it under traffic because they have not only fans that come from those directions, but racers. And so they, they put in for doing it under traffic.
At this point, we, it is too early to estimate the actual time difference that it would be full-time. Alright. Anything else on that?
It was interesting.
It was, you did a great job. Promise to work. Parks, Mark's not here, but Tom, did you have anything?
He did not.
I, I will comment on parks. I was excited to see, I don't know if I mentioned this last time or not, but there, Parks wants to take up a farmer's market, like the plan again, which is something near and dear to me. So I plan to be at that Parks Commission meeting. Others are going to be there as well. Just probably just let someone else get posted.
Or is it, let's get posted anyway, doesn't it?
Normally, Parks Commission, we don't. It's rare that we'd have more than one council person ever in attendance. So I would appreciate if you are planning to attend, if you let me know.
I think it's February or March when they were looking at it. Other committee reports? Scale?
Really good meeting last night. Just packed one with the legislative folks there. It was up to a good one.
Yeah, nothing real groundbreaking to share with the council, but. MVTA? I-35 solutions.
Couple weeks.
Chamber of Commerce.
Kate, you're kind of like the defacto Chamber of Commerce, like, person.
Um, nothing right now.
Okay. CCEC?
I actually was not able to go to the first meeting. I was supposed to go to Josh, don't say anything. I had a prior work commitment I forgot about, so, but I will be at the next one.
Downtown Improvement Committee started having discussions with the members of that committee. Kate, I think I broke in on that email. So I think that's going to be shifting away from a non-city-sponsored, ram entity, I guess. I think the city's played an important role in it. And I think the members of that committee seem to acknowledge that, but it's not seeming to grow in members. The types of things that we've been looking at and talking about are not something that necessarily needs to be, staff time necessarily needs to be used for it, so. I would imagine in the near future, that'll just split off to its own kind of individual entity that will occasionally be brought into it, so. Alright, we got two minutes for the public hearing. Richie, I joke.
Sorry.
Can we just open it to this early?
Tom took the wind out of my sails with this remark.
They'll be late to the recess for two minutes, and people want to take a short break?
Yeah, let's do that. Quick little recess, two minutes. Public hearing will go, there'll be a staff presentation. Opportunity for members of the council to ask questions to Rich. He'll be delivering the presentation. After that, we'll open the hearing for comments that anyone might have. We'll close the hearing, then discuss further as a council and provide some direction to staff, so. Purpose of the hearing itself, it's purely, the purpose of the here, of the improvement hearing is to provide information to all the affected property owners about, about the project and estimated impacts from assessments. The hearing is an opportunity for residents to be heard. They wish to ask questions or comment on the proposed assessments. I'm not going to keep reading all this, but that's, that's generally the way the public hearing's going to go. If you do have something to say, just please approach the podium, state your name and address, and be happy to hear what you have to say. So eight o'clock, so let's open the public hearing.
Thanks for coming, both of you, for your support of this. Sorry, Rob, I read bad information all the time. I forgot that we had set it at eight o'clock, but so trying to catch up here with the brief presentation. We're going to talk about the, a little bit about the city streets, how we manage the pavements in those streets, what this Villanova Lee project actually is, a little bit about the assessments. What construction would look like, and then the future of the street. What happens down the road, no pun intended. City has 21 and a half miles of paved streets that it owns and maintains, so that doesn't. that doesn't include any county or township, so those roads, they're, they're just city streets. Of those twenty-one and a half miles, twelve point eight are what we call local streets, a local street is the street that really doesn't have much through traffic, it primarily serves the people that live on that street. We have minor collectors, three point eight miles of minor collectors, those are streets like Glenborough or Aaron Drive, where we have driveways, but there's also a through movement component, most people will use a minor collector to get to a major collector, which is the remaining category in the city system, and you'll use a major collector like France Avenue or Xerxes to get to County Road Two or County Road Ninety-One. So that's kind of the hierarchy, major collectors have fewer, far fewer driveways, the driveways that may be on it tend to be more of a, you know, they've been there for a long time, our newer major collectors will not have driveways for the most part. If we were going to build all of the city's pavements today, that would be a value of about twenty million dollars, so the streets are the city's highest value infrastructure element that's subject to deterioration, and the difference, the cities, all of the land the city owns might be in that category, but that doesn't deteriorate, so, the point of that is, it pays to spend time taking care and watching the streets. The overlay cost, like the project we're proposing, if we're going to do all the streets at once, would be two and a half million dollars. To manage these pavements, we track them all in a database, based on their location, their age, the condition, and the class, we look at the age and condition, and then the functional class, and we're looking for sort of consistency in assessments from project to project, so those are things that go into choosing which streets we're going to do, and I'll get into that a little bit more later on. But want to point out, the purpose of a Millan Overlake project is to extend the useful life of the road, it's not necessarily to fix poor condition, there may be a pothole or a patch that gets covered up, but we're not fixing these streets, we're trying to put off the day when we have to reconstruct them. So we're looking to apply the overlay in a window right before, if you look at the plot of the typical condition, starting brand new and good condition, over time, the condition deteriorates with age, so if there's no overlay, we would expect a curve like this, and as it gets older, that curve gets steeper, so we're looking to apply an overlay before things start to take off even faster, where more cracks develop more rapidly, alligator cracking shows up more profoundly. So what happens when we put that overlay in, the condition jumps up, maybe not to like a brand new condition, because the old street is still underneath, but it does look and feel new, and it will extend that pavement life, so we're able to push off the point where if we have to reconstruct out here, you know, at this condition level, we're doing it much later because of the overlay, so that's the purpose of it. What you're going to see in streets that we would be overlaying generally, it's not maybe a hundred percent, but generally, they're going to be in that fifteen to twenty-year-old age range, you'll have a lot of sealed and unsealed cracks, so you, you can tell, I mean, the ceiling is that dark band that, that you can spot from a mile away on a street, we do that to help keep water out of those cracks, to keep the cracks from growing even faster. Those streets will have few, if any, potholes and patches, but there may be some, and then often you'll start to see alligator cracking show up in some areas, and it's just what it sounds like if you look at a pair of alligator boots or something, the crack pattern looks like alligator skin, and that is an indication that that street is starting to deteriorate more rapidly, and we want to prevent that, because that means when that gets too much of that, you're going to start seeing potholes, and that is labor-intensive for the crews and expensive to keep up, so we want to stay ahead of that, but there's some flexibility in that window, there's not a certain date that a flag pops up like a done turkey, you have to use some judgment and try and hit the window before things get more deteriorated, and you'll see that they ride okay, but there may be some bumps, especially some of those bigger cracks. What the Millan overlay means is, at the edges, you can kind of make out, I think, the hatching triangular shaped little wedge there, we'd be milling out six feet at each side of the pavement, wherever there's curbs, so what we're doing is, we're making a notch about an inch and a half deep, right by the curb, and that'll taper out to zero, so we'll take out some of that existing pavement with a milling machine, and then we come back, and you can see in blue, a uniform inch and a half overlay, so it fills in, so it's flush at the curb, but it builds up the section out in the middle, and so that adds strength to the pavement. But at the same time, it allows us to maintain drainage and not have a tripping hazard or a step or some weird bump by the, by the curb, and that's essentially what we're doing, I'm oversimplifying, you know, there's going to be manholes and gate valves, we'll have to adjust those to the new pavement height, but that's all part of the project. Why do we do Millan overlay and, and continue in lieu of a cheaper, say, chip seal? So a chip seal, I just showed you with an overlay, I can go back, a chip seal, instead of putting this layer of new asphalt milling, we would just come along, spray a coat of oil over the existing pavement, and then spread rocks, drive on them for a few days, come and sweep up the excess, so you end up with a layer of sticky oil with a thin layer of chips or, or small rocks. And that's a common maintenance strategy, but it doesn't do the same thing as, as an overlay. I put this slide in because we get asked this from time to time, because people are aware of other cities doing Millan overlay. Elko New Market chose not to do that, and this is generally the reason, the chip seal is a different purpose, it's not a structural enhancement, we, meaning me, are not convinced it will meaningfully extend urban pavement useful life, so I just don't feel comfortable recommending that to the council in lieu of the Millan overlay. The chip seal has to be done every five to seven years, and then when you do that, and consider all of the lifespan costs of doing that over a thirty-year period, that actually the overlay ends up being less expensive. And so, just from a structural standpoint, and even find, you know, just doing the math on the finances, the overlay better meets our objectives, we want to maintain an acceptable pavement condition, not a like-new pavement condition, not a beautiful pavement, but at an acceptable and at the lowest annual long-term cost. This just gives you a glimpse at how we estimate the cost and break it out, so we have all these various work items in a column, we estimate the quantities throughout the project, we put a unit price on it, based on recent bids, we may make some adjustments based on inflation, based on project size, just based on what's happening in the market as best we can, but at the end of the day, it's still a projection forward of conglomeration of projects that happened recently. Importantly, in this column, we break out, this would be the cost to do the local and minor streets, we've separated out the cost to do the major collectors. You might recall, I said, local and minor streets have a fair number of driveways, the major collectors have very few driveways, so what I did is, I added up the cost for the local and minor streets, added a contingency and some overhead, and that total project cost then is multiplied by forty percent, and all of the homes that are on just the local and minor streets, they're one unit, plus some of the, I think it's primary, it's all homes on those streets except the golf course, so we add up those units, divide it, and that's how we get the assessment rate. So your assessment does not include payment for the major collector roads, the city would be paying that cost separately. We will assess people on the major collectors, there are a handful, at the same rate, based on the cost for them, so we, we get some reimbursement, but far, the vast majority of the major collector cars that are going to be paid by the city. There's some other, you know, parking costs, storm fund, we break those out separately because they have different funding sources. The total project cost is a smidge over six hundred and four thousand dollars, is what we're estimating for the 2019 project. So about special assessments, the rules are defined by state law, and the city has a special assessment policy that it adopted several years ago, within that policy, the rehabilitation of roads is accessible, including overlays, and that's a sixty-forty split, where the city pays sixty, property owners pay forty. What we're doing is looking for consistency between parcels, so you're going to pay the same as your neighbor, as long as his use is equal to yours, and, and between projects, so we do another one of these in two to three years, we don't want to have double the assessments or half the assessments, we're going to have people paying the same over time, maybe with a little adjustment for inflation, you know, as close as we can. There are prepayment options that exist after the assessments are levied, when the work is done, so if you don't want to pay any interest, there's a way to do that, or if you want to pay it off early for some reason, after a few years, you can do that. We would expect to levy the assessment after the construction is done, and there's a second hearing required on that for the proposed assessments. Unpaid assessments, if you choose not to pay it off upfront to, to avoid the interest, it's collected with property taxes, and the policy calls for a ten-year assessment period for rehabilitation projects. The council can reduce that based on feedback or even on their own initiative, depending on the amount, you know, for a smaller amount, it may not make sense to do whatever ten years, but they haven't really had that discussion yet. For this project, we're proposing to use a unit-based assessment, instead of a very common method is front foot-based, I think that's what most people probably think of when they hear of it, but it's our view that this home with his extensive amount of footage, and this home with his relatively small amount, really are going to benefit from the same, they use virtually the same roads to get where they're going, to get to their homes, and so we feel the benefits the same. Other types of projects may be different. So that's for residential, for commercial, we, we do use reds, but we, commercial may have more reds, and we try to estimate the number of residential equivalent densities based on how much traffic they generate relative to a single-family home. Already mentioned, the city's paying sixty percent, it's based on the cost for minor and local, city's paying all the majors, right now, our estimate is at eleven fifteen sixty-eight per red, each residential parcel is one red, regardless of your size, if you own two lots, though, I will ding you for two, I don't know that I had any of those in this project. And then the commercial parcels are custom, based on the traffic impacts, and we've reached out to the commercial property owners, met with one, provided information to another, and were unable to arrange a meeting with the third parties, trying to do that, because they're a little more complicated to, to go through. As far as construction, you'll know in advance, as best we can, when the contractor plans to move in and start, I don't know that we'll have, I mean, this public hearing doesn't really cover, because we don't know the schedule, but I can, you know, kind of tell you what to expect, we would probably try to do mailings or door hangers, it'll be on the city's website, so we have a number of ways that we'll try to get that information out to you, probably Facebook as well. We are programming this for the summer of 2019, we would expect this to cause minimal access delays to your house, they'll go by fairly quickly, in a matter of, you know, a few hours, the road will be back open in front of your house when they start. There'll be some preparatory work, they'll be sweeping, they'll be maybe fixing some curbs, if there's any curbs that are functionally, that aren't working the way they're supposed to, we're not going to probably fix them for appearance, but if they're a hazard or not draining properly, we'll tear out a section of curb and fix that. We'll raise iron for the manhole castings and the valves, and then they'll come along and do the overlay. The first thing they'll do is spray a layer of oil that helps that new asphalt stick to the old asphalt, and then they'll pave with a paving machine like this, compact it, and just a caution, keep your kids and pets off of that, it's hot, and it'll burn, so, until it's cooled off. And then finally, the future of the street, this is what we're trying to delay, where the asphalt finally gets so bad that we have to either chew it up with a reclaiming machine like this, and turn it into a granular, and take some away and reshape the rest and put a whole new layer of asphalt on, in some cases, we may have to actually pick up the asphalt and haul it away, but lately, most projects are going to a reclaim situation, but this is much more expensive, because we're going to a deeper level, we're putting on a much thicker layer of asphalt, it's more disruption, because it takes longer, it's dusty, and it's noisy, and it's expensive, so the longer we can put this off by doing something like an overlay to, to boost the strength of the street for a while, the more we save in the long run, and the less disruption. But at some point, we can't continue to do overlays, so we will have to come in and do a reclaim and repave, we're hoping that those will be a decade or more away by doing this now, so. Who has the first question?
I'm Barry Ullman, I live at nine zero five five, Lenny Road Drive.
I'll move this over.
I was at the initial meeting we had at the library over this.
Yep.
And I'm not disagreeing with anything, but at the first meeting, we talked about a six hundred dollar assessment.
Yeah.
And I figured, okay, six hundred bucks between now and then, probably go up about thirty percent.
Yep.
You doubled it.
No, that's on me, and I explained this to the council several months ago, we had a computational error, and I can actually go into it if you want to, but they had not accounted for all the asphalt, and so that was fixed, council was notified, and so there was a mistake in the computation, but this number should be better, so.
It's not.
No, I mean.
I liked the six hundred dollar number better, but I was just, I was just like, I'm like, oh my gosh, who's, who's, you know, no offense, but who's getting gouged here? Because we went from six hundred bucks to just about twelve hundred dollars, we just about doubled, that's what got my attention.
Sure. No, I don't blame you, but it was a mistake.
That's all, but.
It's a reasonable question, I should point out, I mean, there, and it was touched on it, there will be another public hearing at a later point specifically the assessments, but, I mean, we can kind of cover it a little bit at this point, but it was a mistake, it was a mistake, I.
Oh, I get it, I was just, I'm like, oh my gosh, we're at the first meeting, six hundred bucks, and I can pay it upfront, fine with that, I like that actually, because I didn't pay any interest. But, and then I opened up the letter, and it's like eleven hundred and some odd dollars, I'm like, oh my gosh, it doubled.
Yeah.
You know?
Rich, when you do, when you make these estimates, are you estimating them based on similar project costs in different areas, or there's some bidding work that has been done to get these numbers?
We, we do base it on recent bids, what happened there, though, the quantity was incorrect, my, my young engineer had not carried through on a math thing, it was just... Just a simple mistake that I did not see until I was reviewing the feasibility report to, to issue, so.
So, all right, that was it?
Apologize for that.
It's okay. Thanks.
Want to go to her?
I'm Marilyn, and I live at ninety-five eleven Main Street, Elko, and when I pay property taxes, I'm paying for one, two, and three, and am I being charged for one house, or am I being charged for three lots?
I'll have to check yours specifically, I don't remember off the top of my head, if you have three residential lots.
They were like, would Elko would use as?
Yep, I actually have it here, if I can take a few minutes, then I'll come back.
Okay.
Let me check it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Robert Ripley, owner of Bullseye Sloan at nine six four six Main Street.
Robert Ripley, owner of Bullseye Saloon at nine six four six Main Street. I had a chance to meet with Terry and Rich to go over a lot of this beforehand, so just a few things that popped up because there's some differences between obviously how the assessments work between residential and commercial properties. And I realized that this is not necessarily the meeting to, there's going to be an additional meeting later on for more of the stuff with the assessments. But I just want to touch on a couple of things that I'd like the council to consider in the meantime, as far as how some of these costs are allocated between residential and commercial. I would like to first say that I am in agreement with the sales pitch for the overlay versus the chip coating. That being said, there are basically two projects, and Rich didn't talk a lot about it during his slideshow, but the way I understand it is there is, as far as in front of Bullseye Saloon on Main Street there. The first one is proposal to resurface the east-west through lanes on Main Street using the overlay process. And I understand that the proposal allocates sixty percent of the project cost to public taxpayers and forty percent of the cost to streetfront property owners. And again, I would like to say that I feel that that's a fair allocation. I also understand that the total cost of the property owner's portion is divided by the number of residences and businesses that are impacted, obviously. Furthermore, I understand that the proposal suggests this allocation between residences and businesses be based on a SAC, a sewer access charge, adopted in some form from the Met Council, from what I understand. Based on these guidelines, the proposal rates Bullseye Saloon at six SAC units or equivalent to six residences. I understand this to be primarily based on water usage figures. I understand that these water usage figures are somehow used to, I guess, figure out traffic impact. Do I think that's a great methodology? I don't know. I don't know a better one. But the fact that we are basing on that sewer access charge, it rates Bullseye Saloon at six SAC units. I questioned Rich on this six number because it's based on water usage, and what we came up with, what Rich came up with, that the actual water usage at Bullseye Saloon was roughly one point three SAC units versus the initial estimate of six. Now, this obviously, again, not the assessment meeting, but something to consider when we're going through this, because that drastically impacted my assessment. If I'm paying six times, residential six times, eleven hundred bucks, far less than one point three times it. So hopefully, we can get close to that one point three number once the council at least has a chance to take a look at it. So, yeah, so, right, big difference in dollar amounts. The second proposed part of the project is what's being termed a perpendicular parking lot. Basically, the portion, not the through lanes, but from the white fog line to the front of my property, to the ones to the south, which I understand that that pavement, if you want to call it that, is beyond repair, and that probably the overlay process wouldn't have worked. So I understand that that's probably going to need to have dug down and reclaimed or whatever needs to happen on that, and that's going to be more expensive. I also understand that the proposal uses a sixty forty formula to determine the cost of the project. This number, I kind of did some quick math, maybe I, I'll just shoot it out, about twenty-five thousand bucks, something like that is what I kind of came up with on what it would cost. Anyway, of that cost, I understand the proposed forty percent would be assessed to business owners of Bullseye Saloon and Captain Black's. So because this is a different situation, and because I believe the city engineer, and I don't know how many of you agree, that this particular perpendicular parking lot is beneficial for parking for downtown, A, safety, B, just allows more parking spots, increased commerce is always good. So I understand that the, what portion of that project will be passed on to myself at Bullseye Saloon and at Captain Black's, the two businesses that will be affected by it. Now, I agree that the local businesses will in fact benefit from this parking project. I also want to point out, the way I understand it, is basically this parking area will be one hundred percent city-owned, and it'll be one hundred percent public property, public parking. Right now, the proposal, from what I understand, looks at a sixty forty split based on what we have adopted into our ordinances, at least for overlay projects. This is a special kind of different project. What I would like to do is at least ask the council to consider changing that sixty forty number for this particular project to something like a seventy-five twenty-five, seventy-five public, twenty-five private. The reason I'm going to ask, the reason I'm asking this, I guess, is first and foremost, again, this parking will be one hundred percent public parking. The dog walking convention of two thousand nineteen, thirty people can come park their cars on all these spots that Captain Black's and I just paid for, they go across the city park and walk their dogs. There is absolutely no guarantee that myself or Captain Black's would have anywhere to park. Now, I do understand that I should be responsible for paying a portion of it, which is why I am proposing twenty-five versus forty. But just like to point out again, that in no way, shape, or form, am I going to own any of this. Is it going to improve my property value? Maybe, maybe not. But I am going to ask the council to at least consider looking at a number other than sixty forty, understanding that I'd have no guarantee of being able to use a single one of those spots ever. So, that being said, also want to point out, my little, get my sob story out of the way, my Scott County property tax for two thousand nineteen proposed, I can use a nice adjective here, a staggering seventy-two percent this year. Just saying, you know, I'm going to kick them while they're down, but at least something to consider on my end personally. Also something to consider when assessing what percent is going to be allocated to the businesses, understand that they may benefit a little bit more, but also be impacted negatively far more as well. While this construction is going on, it's going to hurt business. Now, it could be a couple hours, it could be a couple days. If they go all the way down around the corner by the racetrack and stuff, maybe it's a couple weeks, I don't know, but I guarantee it's not going to help business. So, again, this is a financial hardship impact thing that should also be considered. And finally, there is, from what I understand, once we get this figured out, whatever the council ultimately decides is going to be a portion to be paid for by the private businesses, and I'm in no way, shape, or form trying to speak for Captain Black's because I have no authority to do so. I've not spoken to her about it, but once the council ultimately decides what portion should be ours, I would be happy to pay a portion of this, one of which I suggested, twenty-five seventy-five. Once we break it down to that point, I would ask the council to consider a fifty fifty split between Captain Black's and Bullseye Property, assuming she's good to go with doing this project. But the reason I say that is also based on those SAC numbers, which, based on the research done by the city engineer, our SAC numbers are very similar. I don't feel that one property or the other should get penalized more or less, and I'm just coming forward to the council, say that I'm willing to pay my fair share of my fifty percent, whatever you ultimately decide is fair. I think that is pretty much everything, unless there's any sort of questions for me.
That's brilliant.
Yep.
Thanks.
Very well put together.
Yeah.
Well, as long as I'm up here. I do want to say, plug your ears, Officer Bell. I don't know, I know when all the, when you had interviews yesterday and stuff like that, I know I've interviewed for a police officer position. I would like to point out that through the years I've dealt with Officer Bell, through at Bullseye, not always a perfect relationship between bar owners and law enforcement, I would like to say that Officer Bell, for the record, has been phenomenal to deal with, both as a police officer and just a member of the community. So as long as I'm here, I didn't take anything worse. That's all I've got.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much.
I'm not going to stick around unless you guys have something to.
We're going to just debate your comments, like.
Right.
Oh, we're not going to stick around. My wife's in Vegas, she's watching the kids, so thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Rob.
Thanks, Rob.
There's also a written comment that was provided to the city and request to be shared by the council that was presented by Carolyn Miller, who resides at two six three one five Xerxes Avenue, Elko. Unfortunately, she had conflict and was unable to attend tonight, so she has to have her comment to be provided to the council.
Is there anyone else that's reading the comment? Are you sure? It's a great opportunity.
I was just going to ask if we're going to widen any roads. Xerxes Avenue, I mean, that's the only one.
Rich?
Could you state your name and address for the record, sir?
My name's Joe Klein. I live at two six oh seven one Xerxes.
All right, thank you.
I just want to know if they're going to widen Xerxes Avenue or if they're just going to repave it.
There wouldn't be any changes to the width or section. It would just be additional layer of asphalt.
Oh, okay, that's all I want to know.
What kind of long-term plans, I know this is something that's came up before, but what kind of long-term plans are there for widening Xerxes?
Currently, the long-term plan is that Xerxes would continue to be a rural section to lane.
So we currently do not have any plans to widen Xerxes at this time?
No, if there's development on either side of Xerxes, potentially on either the, let's say, some point, the client property, if they sold their property for development, or if there was some on the other side of the road, there may be widening for turn lanes and things like that, but it would be development associated. But given that there's no physical changes in land use or development on either side, there's no plan at this time to do any widening or upgrading, so to speak, of Xerxes Avenue.
So if I'm understanding you right, Tom, it's, the trigger to actually do that would have to be some development or some change that's different from the current traffic on the road.
Where the traffic on the road, either through volume or type, would require change in basically the design of the road to be able to handle it. And so we'll wait for Rich to put the definitive cap on that statement, but at a staff level, we've never had any discussions that there would need to be any upgrades of the nature that Joe's asking about.
Hey, Rich?
Yes?
How's it going? We got questions for you.
So I was explaining to council that unless there's likely development on either the client property or the property owner's side of the road, there really would be a, we're not anticipating that there would be need to upgrade the road or change the design of the road until such development occurred, then probably be like turn lanes and things like that.
Right. Yeah, despite complaints, there is capacity for the traffic that's there, and I just don't know where the money would come from to do anything other than try and keep it going as long as we can.
May not be the answer you were looking for, but does that help answer your question?
No, that answers, I just wanted to know if they were going to widen here.
Yep.
That helps, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
So really, I mean, the parking in front of Bullseye and Captain Black's is, I mean, they have no, not right, but that doesn't belong to them at all?
It's public parking, as it is in most downtowns. So the logic, as we discussed with the council.
I suppose, in front of Leo's and all that, I mean, I know that is, I suppose.
Yeah, is that they receive some benefit. They don't provide all the parking that's required for those businesses, Rob readily acknowledged that. So it becomes a policy decision as to what that benefit is. What he says is absolutely correct. They can't control it or reserve it from their need, but at the same time, given the uses in the area, they're the primary demand. Now, with the numbers, it's not sixty forty every tire mount, but with certain assumptions related to a certain number of parking spaces go adjacent residential, includes some of those costs, so there's some adjustments for that. But they don't, clearly don't provide the volume of parking. The SAC unit is a way of determining based on some intensity of use, potential traffic impact. So the number that the Met Council provides is based on their studies of level of intensity of use for those types of uses on a regional basis, but doesn't go down to specific users. So Rob is not, obviously, reflect the region, but the flip side of that is, in the current ownership of that property, it may not either, but it might in the future. But we have shown that the use, historically, usage for that property is well below that indicator, and our policy does say that we use that SAC unit. So I think the question for the council is, do you go by the potential or do you go based on the actual for that use? And that would have a significant impact on his assessments.
And do we have to make any decisions or direction at this point in time, based on anything that was brought up here?
No, I think Rob stated it very well. He's simply providing information for the council to chew on in the in-between. When the project is completed and we do look to do the assessments, we need some direction from the council at that time that they want to vary from what the current proposal is.
Is there a way you can get us information on the current proposal and what he is going to end up paying, and then what his proposed proposal would be in payment?
Yes, what the change would be, because that would also be part of the discussion because the taxpayer would be picking up a bigger proportion. So even though technically the assessment hearing is until later, the amount that the taxpayers are picking up may have an impact on your decision about scope in the project. We would still recommend that the work be done, but the council has to be aware, obviously, that if it's not being assessed, the taxpayer will have to pick up the difference.
And it's as simple as us changing the policy in a way, I mean, or not in a way, obviously, it's based on everything that we're deciding, but it's not, it's not like a lengthy process that we have to go through to do that?
And we don't have a specific policy related to the handling of public parking because it can be very unique. So for instance, the cost share, we use the overlay rationales as far as how the cost share was incurred, based on that portion of the policy, but there isn't something specifically to public parking and how you calculate the benefit again. So those are calls that the council has to make based on what they feel is fair and appropriate in that situation.
And the time we would actually make that call, it's not now, it would be?
It would be later.
It'd be later, okay. Because he did actually bring up some really good points and did a very good job of stating it.
Is there any, is there anything in our ordinances for that ramp type of use that says that they have to supply a certain number of parking?
There is, and that's how we, that's the basis we use for determining what their portion of the public parking cost might be.
But they are grandfathered, so there's.
So they're not required to provide it for zoning purposes, but for an indication of what type of parking they might demand, we use that as the basis.
His assertion is that it'd be more fair to split it based on actual usage, which he feels is roughly fifty fifty, and frankly, from what I saw looking at the water uses, I'd probably agree.
I just think my perspective, though, if he's asking us to reduce it at some point or consider reducing it. And if we set that amount based on, you know, the fact that they need to have parking for their use, if that was a new business that was going in there, I mean, they would have to have that. So they need the spaces to really conform to that, even though they're grandfathered in.
So the SAC portion actually related to the road travel lane?
Yep.
The determination on their usage related to the parking was based on their proportional demand, and we use the zoning ordinance as a guide.
Any other question? One thing I, I mean, I talked to Tom the other day about this, this letter that was sent in, and I had spoken with the resident as well, and the larger concern that she had expressed to me was, Xerxes is a much higher traveled road than a lot of the other roads that we're talking about. You know, what's the likelihood that we're going to be coming back more frequently to be doing more projects and therefore assessing more?
And the concern there, of course, is that if the traffic volumes are higher, the lifespan of the road might not be as long. And so as you, on the local street, it might be twenty years, then twenty years, then twenty years, then on a higher volume road, maybe it's twelve years, twelve years, and twelve years. And the concern would be, I have to bear costs related to overlays or reconstruction at a more frequent cycle than other locations. So Rich, based on that, on the higher traffic volumes, is there a likelihood that there would be, generally speaking, between one class of street and another class of street, that they would have to be overlaid or reconstructed more frequently because of the higher volumes of traffic?
Not if they're designed for the traffic in the first place, which a township road, especially Xerxes, that's been there quite a while. So it was, it had a hard foundation to begin with, and it was designed heavier because of its major collector's status. Even though it's narrow, it's got steep ditches, it's got a pretty heavy pavement section and a very well-established base. So I wouldn't think so.
So it's reasonable to assume it's really not going to have maintenance needs any more than any other road, right?
I don't think so, not more frequently.
All right, there's no further discussion now. Any motion to close the public hearing, or Josh?
Well, and I just want to clarify again, and I asked it the last time we talked about this stuff, and I know we aren't touching any of the handicap accessible ramps, and the way I read it, all sidewalks, so go ahead.
I, I do have an update on that, but we did inventory the ramps, not one meets current codes. And so my initial opinion was, well, we know that, but they're also not worn out, and we will be doing reconstruct at some point, but knowing that they don't, I do want to take some time and confer with Andrea before we decide whether or not to include, so that we're not, we want to comply with the, the letter and spirit of the ADA, and so if that requires they be done, you know, we have the information to include that.
Anyone else? All right, if anyone wants to make a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Berg, second by Timmerman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I wanted to just bang this again. Public hearing is closed at eight forty-two. Thank you, everyone, for making it in. All right, last item on the agenda is discussion by council.
We'd be looking for an action from council.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Do you look for a motion?
Motion to a...
Actually, a resolution to, to that reservation nineteen oh eight, ordering the approval...
Oh, there it is, yeah. Motion to, or, yeah, adopt a resolution nineteen oh eight, ordering the...
Motion by Berg?
Second.
Second by Schuttenberg, did I say that right?
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes unanimously. All right, discussion by council. I, I had two things, but I can go last, if anyone else has other, anything else they want to bring up.
I think I just have a quick one. And it was kind of related to the, the ramp thing that sparked it in my mind, but there's a Star Tribune article a couple weeks ago that came out talking about how cities are making sure that they have their ADA transition plans in place, because the federal funding might start being cut, or they're worried about it being cut. Do we have an ADA transition plan? Do we need one? Is that something that this is...
We're just starting it, and I did check into whether our federal funding for the roundabout is in peril without having one, and we're okay right now, but it doesn't mean we shouldn't try to come up with one. It may be as simple as we touch it, for some other reason, we'll go them as we go by, but, so, it's in progress.
Is that a council duty, or is that a planning commission?
Well, the council would have to adopt any sort of plan, as simple as it might be, and so we've come back to you with what we suggest.
Okay, so the planning commission is involved in it?
No.
Okay. All right, anyone else before I list off my two things? Okay. First thing I, everyone, as most know, the Met Council seats are up, interviews are being conducted, I want to say, like, February eleventh, February twelfth, from that ballpark. Our Met Council representative is Wendy Wolf, she's been a Met Council rep for ten years. Beyond that, she was a city council member, I think, multiple terms in Lakeville. Personally, in my experience with her, I've always really enjoyed her, I met with her for about an hour at Firehouse last night, really accessible, and is very much wanting to come down to a workshop and talk with us a little bit more. They, she does have a couple people that have also applied for that appointment. I don't know how much helpful it would be, but I offered to discuss it tonight, if we'd be willing to provide a letter of support for her, so I wanted to get the rest of the council's opinion on that.
Do you know, do we know who else is applied, or have any idea who those positions are?
I don't.
Is that public?
I mean, I do, but I don't know a hundred percent if I'm right, so I don't want to say it.
I don't know if we're common, I don't know the other folks either, whether I...
I don't know.
I don't know all the other candidates. I have worked with Wendy quite a bit, she became a representative when they did some reboundary adjustments several years ago. She does have a very clear understanding of our needs as a community, having worked in Lakeville on internal issues. I've also found her to understand the needs of exurban communities generally, and she is of, there are, and I'll speak frankly, there are interests on the Met Council, there is a strong core of the council members who represent the core of the metro area, and the interests associated with that, and generally speaking, they look to the open markets of the world as being people who are subsidized by the core. From a philosophical standpoint, Wendy understands the need and purpose for the role that we serve within the metro area. I think that her time on the council, when I've talked to Met Council staff, they have always spoken very well of her as far as her knowledge and engagement and understanding of, of issues that affect us, so I think she's done a good job.
If I can piggyback on that, I mean, she is the only, she's the only Met Council representative that was a holdover from the Plante administration, which, I mean, a governor switches parties, that's, the governorship switches parties, it's, generally creates a lot of turnover, because there's, because they're all government, governor appointees. So I think that, that says something about her, she also was a big supporter when we worked to get that loan capped for the sewer system. And I had brought up the idea of even going back and renegotiating that further, and she's not going to promise anything, because that's a probably a long ways out, but she was willing and open to have that conversation when the time is right, if she is reappointed. So I guess, long way of saying, if, if she's helped us out in the past, if it seems like she's willing to continue having conversations with us and find ways to help us develop, I think she'd be a great asset, and I'd certainly love to sign a letter that would support her, if the rest of the council feels the same.
Since I don't know her, if you feel that strongly about her, I'll back you.
I got you, Joe.
It's not, it is not uncommon, although not always the case, that cities will identify a representative, a representative who repropose their city law, and offer letters of support that's been done in the past, we have done it in the past.
For one.
For one, and so if the council, and I've done it in other communities for other representatives, because the council felt it was appropriate, so if the council did want to do it, it would be as simple as directing staff to prepare one for the mayor's signature on behalf of the city council.
Does it put us in a bad spot if she doesn't get it, and now we have not supported the next person coming in? I mean...
There's always a risk, but you hope that the individuals that are appointed will serve their district. You know, objectively and equally, but there's, you know, people are people, there's, there's a risk.
From what she had said, I, I should point out, she didn't ask for a letter, she didn't ask for anything. She did point out she has, of her district, she has the least amount of opponents applying against her, and I believe she, I mean, she believes she's the only one that's actually gotten any letters of, of support, so, yeah, I, I feel that is kind of a feather in her cap, but who knows what would end up happening, it's a fair question, Josh.
What other communities does she serve?
She's got a big area, you know, all the way down, from as far east as Hastings, we're pretty much on the western border, from which she has, I think goes a little bit further into Spring Lake Township, don't quote me on that, but it's in that general ballpark.
We're the only city in Scott County that she serves.
North of Apple Valley.
Do you know if any of those other communities have given her letters of support?
I'm not aware, I'm not aware either way.
I would imagine Lakeville has, but I don't, I didn't ask what other communities.
She did get other letters, though, you said.
She did get other letters, I mean, she's, as you'd imagine, I mean, she lives in Lakeville, so, and she's a lot closer to Lakeville, obviously serving on their council for a number of years, but, and she is a regular at their Chamber of Commerce, business advocacy meetings, and so she does, not too far from us, represent, or is active in the community.
It looks like here she's in, I mean, Apple Valley, Castle Rock Township, Coats, Douglas Township, so smaller cities other than Lakeville. She does have Credit River, Spring Lake, Cedar Lake Township.
Do you have a picture of her?
I can get one, give me two seconds.
I was curious if I know her. I don't really know.
Is anyone object to that? If anyone have a question?
Go for it.
Last thing I had on here was, last council meeting, we talked briefly about the idea of having a council retreat. I had proposed as a way of just, in a less formal fashion, discussing what our goals are, what we want to accomplish as a city council. If that is something that we agree that we want to do, we, we should probably start getting, before the next city council meeting, we should probably start shooting some ideas at Tom, as to the things we would want to discuss. It's a pretty uncontroversial thing, but I'm sure you could object if you wanted to. All right. Has anyone opposed, or have anything they might want to add to that?
So as you start coming up with ideas of topic areas that we should be talking about, just drop an email, and we'll start compiling the list, combined with items that staff might have as well.
Does anyone have anything else for discussion by council?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Berg?
Second.
Second by Timmerman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Another question?
Fifty-three.